Second by Councilwoman Wenzel. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. At this point, the mayor submitted a veto message concerning three actions from the city council during our special meeting on Wednesday, July 24, 2019. In his veto, the mayor indicated that he is vetoing the three motions from the council. The mayor does not have the power to put veto motions under the charter, just resolutions and ordinances. Further, the mayor submitted one veto statement covering all three actions, instead of providing a separate veto for each action as required by the charter. Section 7 dot 13 of the charter says, "The clerk must admit the mayor's veto or vetoes." Here, the mayor combined three actions of the council into one veto message. Nevertheless, and to avoid any question about the intent of the council, we will vote to override each of the three resolutions as if the mayor vetoed them separately. Further, by vetoing the resolution which amended our meeting schedule, it can be anticipated that the mayor would not, would now claim that his meeting was not properly called. However, the mayor then submitted additional items to be added to this agenda. Additionally, if the mayor were allowed to veto the council resolution setting our regular council meeting schedule under Charter section 6 dot 4, then the council would be prohibited from ever meeting. Since the interpretation of the charter cannot be correct, it is clear that this meeting is proper. Our change to the regular meeting schedule is also called pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, MCL 13 dot 265-3, covering changes in the regular meeting schedule, which only requires that notice of the change be posted within three days. Therefore, proper notice was provided of today's meeting in accordance with both date and state, in accordance with both state and the city charter. Finally, the city attorney, Gary Miyaki, was provided an advanced copy of the revised retainer agreement as well as the general resolution. Mr. Miyaki did not raise any concerns with the revised retainer agreement prior to the council vote last week. He also failed to raise a concern with the resolution to revise the regular meeting schedule despite actively participating in that discussion. To now raise concerns with the retainer agreement to the mayor is a legal conflict of interest, and the council was never asked to waive that conflict. Under the charter, Mr. Miyaki is supposed to represent the city, the city council, and the mayor. By failing to raise concerns with the city council before our vote, and then to raise concerns to attempt to justify a mayoral veto demonstrates a clear legal conflict. I will now ask the clerk to replace, to place resolutions 19 dash 291, 19 dash 292, and 19 dash 293 on the agenda for the council's override votes.
Madam Chair.
Councilman.
You said, I'm sorry, you said, uh, resolution 19?
It's 19 dash 291, 19 dash 292, and 19 dash 293.
Council chair, you talking about from the previous meeting?
It's on the agenda.
I see. I see. I was looking for the same thing.
First of all, um, we will vote on veto to not have this meeting. The mayor has vetoed this meeting, and so we need to reintroduce the motion to have us go forward with this meeting.
Motion 19 dash 293.
Yes, 19 dash 293, because it was the last one that we had last week at our special meeting.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Bazey.
Yeah, move council to readapt the resolution and amend the regular meeting schedule, the Dearborn Heights City Council, as outlined in 19 dash 293. Support.
Support by Councilwoman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, just for briefly, I don't object to the fact that this council has right to hold meetings. This is a special meeting, not a regular meeting.
This is a regular city council meeting.
This is a special meeting.
It's not.
Council chair.
We are allowed to do this. Go ahead.
Council chair, we, as a body, voted to have this as a regular scheduled meeting. These are our meetings, council meetings, strictly and instantly. Nothing wrong with it. I researched this, I've called power matarians. There is, it's ridiculous to veto this meeting, absolutely ridiculous. How can you veto a, something that the council came together, voted seven-nothing to change the scheduling? How? What legal right do you have? You have none. And to say this is a special meeting, call it what you like, it's a regular scheduled meeting, as adopted by city council, that's how I feel.
Okay, yeah, this is the Dearborn Heights City Council Regular Meeting Schedule Amendment Resolution that we are entertaining right now, meaning we can continue on with this meeting. We do need what is called a superveto, which would mean a minimum of five out of seven people would have to vote for that. If we don't, the meeting will end right now. So, at this point, let's move forward. Is there any further discussion?
There won't.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Cassin.
Does anybody have a copy of 19 dash 293?
It was in the package. It was sent to you by email.
It was an email, plus it was in your package.
It's from our previous meeting.
It should be in the minutes, too. I'm looking at, I'll put in an email.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman, oh, Abdullah.
It was, it was an email that came from the clerk, Biellem. This, this sheet right here.
It's asking when your minutes, from July 24th. So, this motion, as it reads, is, um, it was by Councilwoman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Bazey, to adopt the resolution to amend the regular meeting schedule of this Dearborn Heights City Council. Where this Dearborn Heights City Council wishes to amend its regular meeting schedule to add a third regular meeting of the month of July 2019. Now, therefore, be it resolved that pursuant to section 6 dash, 6 dot 4 of the charter, council will amend its regular meeting schedule to hold an additional regular meeting on Tuesday, July 30, 2019, at 6:00 P.M. And be it finally resolved that the notice will be provided with no less than three days' notice, which it was. Our clerk took care of that. Any further questions? Okay, at this point, let's vote to see if we're going to continue on with this meeting. All those in favor of this resolution, 19 dash 293, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Let's do a roll call. Councilwoman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cassin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bazey?
Yes.
Maxwell Melonowski is yes. Councilwoman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman?
Wenzel.
Wenzel. That's what he gets for coming up last minute.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't hear. Okay, so we have seven, so we have a superveto, we have overridden that veto. Next, on our thing, we have for consideration, uh...
Well, because it was done to one body. We could put them down.
But they're still good up as one, so we're going to act like it's three, but legally it's one, so we got to treat it as one. Okay, the second veto was, um, in regards to, let's see. We've got 293, we've already supervetoes. Uh, let's go back to 19 dash 291. That's resolution to authorize the retention of Ottenus to Wheel and Shank PLC as special legal counsel of council to the corporation of council in retainer agreement.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Bazey.
I move the council to readapt the resolution to authorize the retention of Ottenus to Wheel and Shank PLC as special legal counsel to council, to the corporation council, and to authorize the firm to file action necessary as outlined in 19 dash 291.
Support. Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
Just for clarification, I've had this discussion before, and just like, just for full transparency, we have a separate meeting on this again. Just want to say my personal disagreement with the audit, I have no problem with any type of audit. My biggest disagreement right now at this particular point is based on cost, the cost of the audit. So, just a couple of points I want to point out. I'm okay with the audit, I disagree with the cost, and at this particular point, I still don't know what the specific cost is going to be, although I do know what you prove the cost at the end, we still don't have no type of projection. I've asked multiple, multiple times if it's going to be $5,000, $50,000, $200 million, $5 billion, whatever it happens to be, at this point, we still don't know. And I know they're going to come to us to approve a bill, but by that particular point, they've already done the work, so they're going to come to us hypothetically with whatever that bill happens to be. And now, what do we do? Go back and get sued by them for the fact that we're not paying them for a bill, that we didn't initially authorize the exact amount? That's one of my objections. Second objection, again, connected to that, is how much is this going to cost? We still don't know, still don't have an idea. I've seen all kinds of numbers thrown around, they enable anywhere from Troy's $70,000, which I think the mayor put in his veto, all the way to, you know, a million, etc., being thrown around. So, I don't know. I'm not an attorney to figure out the cost of this, but that's something that's concerning for me. That's one of the reasons why I keep voting no on this. The third thing I want to point out is, although we a lot of times disagree, a lot, a lot of people understand this, this is a part of the checks and balances of our United States government. Not, you know, if we had seven people agreeing on everything, or seven people disagreeing on everything, that would not be good for the residents. So, I think it's kind of good to get, if nothing else, you know, the opposite point of view, a lot of legal matters from point of view. And also, we'd like to talk about, counting the time on this thing. Now, our council, Jeremy Hocky, had had some concerns way initially when we first started with this thing, as far as whether this was legal or not, and I know we went with the first lawsuit, and then it was thrown out based on the same account that he had mentioned. With that being the case, one of the concerns that he's got right now, and again, I'm not an attorney to determine this, but his concern is whether this can be transferred over to the next body, so it's not capped as far as time, or as far as dollars. I think we ought to take his concerns into consideration. And lastly, I will again say, because the first lawsuit was not authorized by the council as a body, I don't believe, again, they should be paid, and I brought that up before, but it's still in this current retention agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Cassin.
Um, just echo what Councilwoman Abdullah said. Also, we do have city auditors, Plan Moran, the council secures and hires them to do the audit. They audit our books, they audit many other cities' books. They're bound by certain requirements, ASCPAs for audits. Let's talk about a conflict, because they're familiar names, same thing with Gary Miyaki, because he's the city attorney having a conflict. It's, it's just not the case. But I, I don't understand why we don't hire another accounting firm to do the audit of the audit, and why we're hiring this law firm, and then try to make the audit of the audit confidential. There's just no reason for it. And also, I agree with Councilwoman Abdullah, the, there shouldn't be any payment from the taxpayers for the first lawsuit that was filed without any vote or notice, any of the council members. That is just outrageous. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bazey?
I'm kind of surprised that they keep, both council members keep bringing up the issue that they did not authorize, and they should not pay for the attorney's fees. However, the mayor, from the lawsuit against the mayor, actually, I mean, it is in the paper, so I'm not saying anything, it's not in the paper. He made the decision to hire another director, and therefore, there's, no, no, it's still the same, it's still the same, however, it was not, yeah, but it was never, it was never addressed, you know, and the council did not approve it, and I mentioned it two meetings ago, so you guys, you guys pick and choose what you want to approve or disapprove, so that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mayor.
I followed the charter, and I went through corporation counsel to hire corporation counsel to protect the mayoral position and my position, and that was completely legal. I did, I contemplated that the council, and there is yet to be an admittance by the chair, particularly, as to her hiring the first lawsuit against me. Many of the council members have asked, who authorized it? You have refused to say you did, and I went through corporate counsel. This council did not follow the charter.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, at this point, we will vote on, this is 19 dash 291, resolution to authorize the retention of Ottenus to Wheel and Shank PLC as special legal counsel of council to the corporation council in retainer agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilwoman Cassin and Councilwoman Abdullah are opposed, let's take a roll call on that. Councilwoman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilwoman Muscat is yes. Councilwoman Conston?
No.
Councilwoman Conston is no. Councilwoman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bazey is yes. Melonowski Maxwell is yes. Councilwoman Abdullah?
No.
Councilwoman Abdullah is no. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton is yes. Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Yes. At this point, we do have a superveto, we have overridden the mayor's veto. Our next is motion 19 dash 293.
29.
I'm sorry, 292, I'm sorry. Okay, 292, that's to authorize Ottenus to Wheel and Shank PLC to file appeal.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Bazey?
I move the city council to authorize the law firm of Ottenus to Wheel and Shank PLC to file an appeal of the court, court's July 17, 2019 decision in the matter of Dearborn Heights City Council versus Daniel S. Aleco, case number 19 dash 007240 dash AW, as outlined in 19 dash 292.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Does there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah?
I brought it out earlier, and I'm going to bring it out again. We've had multiple discussions about when they're going to be paid for, how much they're going to be paid, and when officially it starts, and the language is still in here that says this starts from day one that they're going to be paid. And we had discussion, I'm going to get to some of the details, but we talked about striking it out, if you recall. So, I just want to understand, we make these objections, you listen, and that's good, I respect the fact that you listen, I appreciate that, but what happens next? Are we getting these out, or are you basically saying?
They didn't.
We're not going to?
I don't recall everybody agreeing with that. I know you wanted to know, I know Councilwoman Conston did, but no one else.
Okay, so for transparency, everybody's not in agreement that, so it creates an agreement on the council that we should pay them from day one, even though they were not authorized by us as a council as a body?
They were authorized by council as a body to represent us, and that was.
From day one?
Yes, from the day that we voted on it as a body. I know we all did agree on it, but as a body, we did have.
No, no, I'm talking about the first, first lawsuit. I, again, I and some, without any specific council people, did not even know about it, because it had not been discussed whatsoever, and then suddenly, it was in the papers and social media, there was a lawsuit that had transpired, like a couple of events, but done. So, I knew nothing about it, no email, no conversation, nothing, zero zip nada. With that being the case, I just don't understand, my brain is not understanding, how we pay them, since we didn't authorize it as a body. So, if you guys are okay with paying them, I, I respect the vote, I'm just voting no on that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Conston?
Briefly, regarding the appeal, number one, the appeal would take a year or two minimum. Number two, you wouldn't file now a third lawsuit and also take an appeal of the decision of the second lawsuit. You would do one or the others, just duplicate efforts and extra attorney fees.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, at this time, let's take a vote. We are voting on 19 dash 292 to authorize Ottenus to Wheel and Shank PLC to file an appeal, as outlined by Councilwoman Bazey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Let's take a roll call. Councilwoman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilwoman Muscat is a yes. Councilwoman Conston?
No.
Councilwoman Conston is no. Councilwoman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bazey is yes. Melonowski Maxwell is yes. Councilwoman Abdullah?
No.
Councilwoman Abdullah is no. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton is a yes, and Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel is a yes. We do have a superveto, we have overridden all three vetoes that were written for this meeting. At this point, I'm going to ask everybody to stand to Pledge of Allegiance. Lisa Muscat will be joining, who will be lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Next, we have agenda approval.
Council chair.
Councilwoman Muscat?
I move that we approve the agenda for the July 30th, 219, regular scheduled meeting of city council with a movement of 8A to 1B and 9A to 1C as outlined. Second.
Support by Councilwoman Bazey.
Was it 1A that we were changing?
We changed 8A to 1, because I was on the.
To 1.
8B.
8B.
Excuse me.
Happy 8B.
8C. To 1C. And 9A to, correct, 1.
No, 9, okay, it will be.
8B.
Will be 1B.
1B. And 9A becomes 1C.
Yes.
Because 8A was.
Okay, we have, submitted by Councilwoman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have approval of minutes. This is minutes from the regular meeting of July 23, 2019. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Can we take the July 24th and 23rd together? I don't have any problem with it, because everyone else.
Okay, then we will also include 4B, which is minutes from the special meeting of July 24, 2019. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Move to approve the minutes from July 23, where their meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council, and the special meeting from July 24, as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Abdullah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
I haven't heard a comment here. I think we should do those separately.
Okay. Let's, let's, you know what, let's, yeah, let's do it, I'm going to redo it, please. Okay.
You want to amend your motion?
All right, well, I'm going to do amend the motion to be only for the minutes of their other meeting of July 23, 2019, Dearborn Heights City Council.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Abdullah. All those, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have minutes from the special meeting of July 24, 2019.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah?
I don't think that we approved the minutes from July 24, 2019, special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, as outlined, unfortunately, I didn't give an exact one, as submitted.
Second, my councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearings and comment on agenda items. We ask you to come to the podium, you have 22 minutes, state your name, and agenda items only. Is there any comment on agenda items? Okay, at this point, we will move on. Next, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Council chair.
Councilwoman Muscat?
I move council approve item 61 to 613, as submitted.
Support. Support by Councilwoman Abdullah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Bazey?
I'd like to know what's the difference with the workers' comp between two different companies? You have 62 for one company, with an amount of $10,500, and the next one is, is another company, was, I'm sorry, 63, and then the amount of $7,500, and the month budget before payment is the same on 1, 62, then 63.
I can speak to the Broadspire in Westchester, they're the third-party administrator of the actual claims, worker comp claims, so if someone needed a diagnostic test, they would get that approval, and then they'd get the claim, negotiating the best price that they could for the city, so if you had a diagnostic center, like an MRI scan, they would work out a good price, and then that's what the city would pay if an employee needed an MRI. That's what Broadspire does. Then the other one is Mike Neldigan, that's his insurance company, he's the individual that does speak in front of the council body, and gets update on a couple of items, I know this obviously is under workers' comp.
Yeah, Mr. Neldigan came in for the information of the council, and he is shopping our workers' comp, but he would like to, the MMRA is thinking of forming their own workers' comp insurance, like you do the rest of it, so I believe this is somewhere in the status, and this could be the first payment that will go eventually to MMRA. The reason that you have 204, 755 for the amount budget before payment is very logical, and that's a fact, that it's to show us that there's enough budget in there to handle both the $10,500 and the $7,500. That number does not get diminished until there's approval on a payment.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further questions or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah?
Unfortunately, I know John Selley is not here, but I just want to check, Ian and Cement, we'll kind of answer that, but I just want to make sure that it's not the company, really new to the problem, or from the company, that's not the company where we had problems with the number, I'll come to make sure. Thank you.
Ian and Cement been a good company for us in the, in the past years.
Perfect, yeah.
Okay, is there any further discussion? This is for fund transfers and current claims. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is from the reports from mayor. That's for approval of payment for McMillan Group Incorporated for contractual services.
Council chair.
Councilwoman Muscat?
I'm not exactly sure what to do with it, other than we need to, I believe, approve the payment in the amount of $50,375 for the work that was done in the demolition of the homes in question. The work was done, and so I guess the most I would be to authorize a payment to McMillan Group in the amount of $50,375, as outlined in 9A, because I believe we have the, the paperwork, we have the paperwork from Chief Law Attorney. Support.
Support by Councilwoman Conston. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Bazey?
Again, I'm voting no, I mean, thank you for the chief for submitting that email, but I'm still not happy with this company. There, there's a report from the state that they actually had stopped, stopped them from working, and they needed to have water, and there's over 2,700 square feet of asbestos, and I'm not sure how they handled that, and just, this is just one house out of the three. So, they had the stop order, and they brought a smoke, like water tank, and then pictures I submitted, there was a lot of dust in the air, and the pictures that I submitted, there's a lot of contaminants that was in front of the house, those homes, and the residents are still concerned about asbestos and that, that was in the area, so that's why I'm voting no on this one.
Council chair.
Councilwoman Muscat?
Which is good points by Councilwoman Bazey. I think we can get this cleared out, and make sure that we go out and make sure we have a different company doing these demolitions in the future. Yeah, there's no reason to keep going back to get a company that's subcontracted, subcontracted, another subcontract. I don't know why the city's not hiring a company that's authorized and approved by the state to do demolition and abatement.
I guess I've got concerns, too. Is the site okay now? Did they remove the asbestos that they detected and the other movements?
Madam Chair, I talked to some of the residents, nobody came up to do soil samples or nothing like that, that's why I'm voting no.
So, it's not been corrected, and you're going to pay them, and they'll be underway, and we'll have a recourse.
Madam Chair, is this a small contractor, minority contractor? Madam Chair, is this a small contractor, minority contractor? $50,000 may drive them out of business. I don't want to get a lawsuit on behalf of the city where he now says I had to go out of business because the city of Dearborn Heights didn't pay me.
But there's rules that have to be followed.
Council Chair, I believe this is a very small amount to get them out of our hair. Let's be done with them, okay? And let's move on from here. And when we go and do next demolitions, we make sure that they're not one of the
My concern is if we're left with asbestos and stuff in the soil, we will be responsible ourselves for cleaning it up at our cost.
Madam Chair.
And that could be a bit expensive. Councilman Abdullah?
But at the same time, just to be fair, we had, A, an investigation by our police department through the request of the City Council who came, they came back pretty much pretty clean. But also additionally, I went through the whole, all the answers and the whole nine yards from DAQ. And that'd be specifically Joel Goetke. These guys emailed, phoned over the whole nine yards. And, and, and I read through the five-page report and consistently across the board. It seems like all the Ts were crossed, all the Is were dotted. So as far as the state's concerned, and this is a body that is not necessarily does not have any financial benefit in this. Okay, this was an independent body that gave the okay on this. So when an independent body from the state gives us the okay on this, and then our police department does their own investigation and they're okay on this, and then our DPW slash Building Department, whoever was involved with it, they're okay on this. Our council attorney is okay on this. I mean, I, I, we could do maybe more due diligence for the council's comfort level next time, that's fine. But in this particular case, just to be fair, I think the company should be paid, just to be fair. There, there may be some residents that have concerns and I get that because it's obviously, you know, I mean, I'd be scared if my house was near there. So I, I get that.
I'm thinking that too myself.
I totally respect that. I totally get that and respect that. But at the same time, I know just based on my business, sometimes people are fearful of things just because of the unknown versus the experts, which in this particular case would be, A, the companies doing it, which I get, they would be a little biased. But B, more importantly, the, the, the state that has no financial interest that gave us the okay on this. So I think this particular point, the right thing to do would be to pay them. You can't just eject almost everything. Just given my opinion.
Thank you. Councilman Coniston.
Yeah, I wasn't a fan of McMillan Group. They brought on to do these demolitions. They are a minority company out of, I think, Inster, but it's, everything's been checked out and there, there's not a problem. Asbestos is a risk for a lot of things, but I, I think that the bill has to be paid.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
People I talked to, their main concern was that during the demolition, they weren't, they were not using water to knock down the dust. And I'm, I'm in favor of paying them, but maybe not everything. If they're not doing the work the right way, I'd pay them the full amount. And they knocked down the house. But the main, the, the four or five residents I talked to, they said that the dust was just fine. It was a lightly, light breezy day and it was, they used no water to knock down the dust. Which is, and you see it on TV all the time. You always gotta be, always there watering down the house for the demolition.
And that was our main concern. Well, we approved them. We all discussed that. Would it be done properly? And they still didn't do it properly. According to what residents have witnessed, and they're our best witness. Yeah, Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I would approve paying them out, but I will tell you, I don't know what price tag you want to put on people's health. I'm really concerned that this company, you know, I mean, it hurts their own credibility to follow what they should have, the guidelines. I don't think we should continue using them. I think we should do a better job vetting this out, approving because, I mean, this is, I mean, again, that's somebody's health we're talking about. What price tag is that worth? We owe that to our residents to do a better job. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Let's, oh, let's move on.
Can I just speak to one thing about the process of demolition?
We're just gonna vote on it now.
Okay, I just don't want people going the impression that they didn't do it.
Okay, at this time, we are going to vote on approval of payment for McMillan Group Incorporated for contractual services. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey, Councilwoman Hicks, and Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell and Councilman Wenzel is no. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Coniston is a yes. Councilman Abdullah is a yes.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Hicks Clayton is a yes. So it passes. Okay, next. At this point, we are all ready to comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
The last few days, I've received some phone calls about Detroit Street with rats. I'm gonna, I guess through you, I have to ask our ordinance director if he's known about this or has heard about it. And if, if not, what can we do? Can we go out and check some of these abandoned homes on Detroit Street and find out what's going on?
Just tell them to call me. I haven't heard anything, so.
Now, I know there's one house that wasn't plumbed on Detroit Street. I've had several calls on
Yeah, and we brought it up at a council meeting a few times already. I've, you know, the thing is, is I, I've told people that they need to contact the property departments before they contact, contact us, okay? So I'm gonna take it as they have contacted the property departments. So if you want to comment on that.
He's up there now.
Sure, so the only one that I'm aware of from prior was one particular house complaining about the next door neighbor house. I have a, I'm lucky enough to have one of my full-time officers that used to work for Critter Control. He came to me from Critter Control. He's also, he's vector certified. I've literally sent him out there four times and he, he is a trained licensed vector control person. And he's seen no evidence of rodents at that property. I will, I will say the same thing that I said before. This particular person that I believe is calling you, I don't, I can't say who it is. But I do know that there is a particular person over there that is throwing poisonous rat packs from their property into neighboring properties, even properties that there's no evidence of rodents. Which is dangerous because those other properties have small animals and they have grandchildren that visit on a regular basis. And the packets can be picked up and they're poisoned. They're very toxic. There was a property behind the one I believe you were speaking of that had a recycling pile, you know, for, they were putting food items out there to recycle and to compost. They were instructed to remove it. They did do that. We, I, I literally have sent that, my person out there three to four times. It's not his area, but I asked him to go in there and look around. He's looked around. I've talked to the owner of that property who has tenants there. She's had an exterminator come out. They're not seeing what is being reported, so.
Can we, can we go out and take one more of them just for?
Would you go with me?
Yeah.
Okay. So then, and then maybe, maybe we can officially put an end to it if we all go out there together.
One other.
Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
Different subject or same subject?
It's different subject.
Okay, if you don't mind, just go ahead, Councilman. So I'm really concerned about this resident, whoever it is, that's throwing packets across people's yards. What's, I mean, you don't have to name the person or the address, but I presume you're all over this, right?
Am I all over it?
To make sure that whoever it is stops doing this, obviously.
Well, I, well, there is a history with this person, I think, that you're all referring to.
I don't know who it is. I'm just
It has, it has involved some, some legal things, so I mean, that's about all I can say on that.
Thank you.
Open that one more.
Councilman Muscat?
Even on social media and plus the phone calls and, and emails about speeding in our city. We've got a lot of race cars out there and they're getting more powerful all the time. And now children are using mopeds and go-karts out on the street. Are we, I, I don't know what to do about it other than being more vigilant by the police department. I don't know if Mr. Mayor wants to address that issue about what we can do with it.
Is there anything? Please Chief.
Deputy Chief, Police Chief is here. As soon to be the chief, so.
Well, I, as this subject been brought up numerous times, we do have a traffic enforcement program that we use regularly. Officers write numerous tickets. We have zones that are dedicated, yet the officers are supposed to go to. If there is a problem with a traffic situation, call the police department. We will put it on a hot list, so to speak, and we will address that issue. As Chief Volotorni has said in the past, the traffic violations have to be witnessed by the officers before we can take enforcement action.
Councilman Abdullah?
Deputy Chief.
I, I did have a resident email me about the area, just since you were bringing that up. On Wilson, pretty much either side of Beach Daly, but this most specifically on Wilson, because there's no stop sign between Beach Daly all the way down to Gully. I guess a lot of people are just taking off on that particular street, so that may be an area. But I did have a question for you. From my little research, you know, I'm not an expert in that field, but just, and obviously I have nowhere near where you're at as far as knowledge on this stuff. But I'm just, just throwing it out there. For some people, it may be easier for them to pay a ticket of $100, $150, $200, whatever it happened to be. I've got a speeding ticket recently, so I don't know. With that being the case, is community service a better way to do this? Because if you catch somebody and they can afford it because they got a job, they pay and they move on with their life. And most of the younger generation, unfortunately, don't worry as much about, oh, insurance going up and whatever that their parents worry about. Is community service an option from a legal standpoint?
Well, we write the tickets. What happens with them as far as payments and everything is
It'll be a judge's decision?
Yeah, and I believe that there is a traffic court answer, so.
You cannot do it?
No, not for, not for a sibling fracture. So fine. That's it.
Shame. That would, that would work for the most younger generation, I think, but, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just throw one thing. Living off of Beach Daly and, and I like auto racing, but racing should be done on a strip and a racetrack and not on a street. And I told a lot of the young people, I challenged them and I said, if you really think you're cool and a great driver, why don't you follow me on SCCA or a drag strip? And that's where you do this. I will tell you that it's not unusual on weekend nights. And to hear the roar in these Mopars, and I actually talked to some of the kids. They're telling me they're leasing these 800-power Mopars for like $250 a month. This is unbelievable that you can buy a literal hot rod, a race car for this, and they're, they're using them on the streets. But I hear that engine and they're drag racing. And we've asked the officers to watch, but it's, it's hit and miss. Because there's not necessarily a random that between 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning on Saturday or Friday, they're gonna be racing. But I, but I recognize the engine sound and I'm telling you, these are challengers and chargers. And I, I've looked out the window and, and a lot more residents, because I see these cars parked in the neighborhoods, the different colors of the vehicles. And I handed that over to the police. And, but the difficulty is, as the deputy chief said, an officer has to see it. Even though I've seen it, I can't, they can't write a ticket based upon my observation. It has to be seen by police officers. So we're, we're aware of it. We want to stop it and hopefully we will.
That's a problem. That's a problem.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Okay, I have about three items, but I see some residents here from Wilson. I'm sure they're gonna address this issue with the one additional stop sign. I'll have them speak to it when, when they speak in a few minutes. The other item, I'm getting calls from residents. They'd like to see the ordinance regulation that, I don't know if the current council in attorney wrote this for the pension for specific individuals. Just wanted to see the ordinance, if you can give me a reference so we can look at it. That benefits certain individuals, not the residents of Dearborn Heights, to make sure that it complies with state municipal ordinance regulations about double tipping. Last item. I'd like to bring up, this is for the ordinance director, to see if they can go look at House 6862 Gully.
I'll, if you want to give me an answer, I just don't like to do that because it sometimes creates a kind of anger people. Tell me the street and I'll get the address afterwards. But what's going on there?
It's on Gully, 6862 Gully. Well, it's on Gully. This house has had a lot of issues, renters from one to the other. And the owner is not doing anything. I got a report infestation of all kinds of stuff, bugs, mice, also black mold. And the current tenant just basically left, left the house, has a lot of health issues. Talked to the resident and the homeowner, actually, when the person vacated for health reasons, he decided to, you can actually drive by the house. There's a court order for eviction, even though she's been gone for a month from the house because of health issues, because of black mold and infestation. I'd strongly recommend for the city, either ordinance or the building department, go and inspect the house. So the next resident that moves into the house does not have any health issues looking in the house.
Yeah, you can do that.
Thank you.
I'll wait to have this for you.
That's it.
Councilman Abdullah?
Resident was here earlier. Well, I, I just want to thank them that they brought it forward in regards to the veterans section there. I can't see them.
Yes, Mr. Jackson.
Apologize, apologize, yeah. So I just want to thank you for bringing that forward. And I see the city's done some work over there and, and I do appreciate it. It looks a lot better. So I just want to thank you for bringing that forward because they've given the respect that they deserve.
Any further comments from council members? Councilman Wenzel?
With my continued support of our veterans, I love them at. I'd like all of our veterans here, including Councilman Bazey, to please stand and be recognized. Veterans out there. I do want to commend whoever was involved with the, I'm sure the mayor's office has something to do with the cleaning up the memorials out in front. Memorial wall is looking good. Still, we're still waiting on the memorial statue. Is there an update on that? With the rifle and helmet missing on the memorial statue. They said they would be here at the end of July, someone from Minnesota, so we're kinda having Do we have a timeframe at all on that? Close to the end of July? That's tomorrow. So it's, sometimes, sometimes soon. He's in Minnesota. He's got it made. He's planning a trip out here. He's got three stops. When he gets here, he'll put it up for us. Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Also, we have the Dearborn Heights Veterans Facebook page. It's going on pretty well. I'm gonna challenge all the businesses out there to go onto this Facebook site and offer our veterans some kind of deals at their business. Something that they, we do for other people and seniors. It'd be nice to have something special for our veterans. And also is, I'd like to get an update on the placate for the Swafka Park. Can we get, is there anybody here can give us the update?
The director's father's very ill, so he is not here today. I do, I would not be in a position to offer you an update.
What about the deputy director? Would you know anything?
I pretty much know just as much as you guys do. He came and requested to go out for bids and that's all I'm aware of as well.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council table?
Madam Chair.
On August 10th, Saturday, we have our citywide garage sale coming up again. Spearheaded by Maria Langoyes and the recreation department. I think there's still tables available and a lot of good stuff, tools for the men, clothes for the women. And just echo what everyone else has said, the speeding is a real problem. In Dearborn Heights and Dearborn, I know in Dearborn, they had tickets of young men driving over 100 miles an hour down Ford Road. Until somebody's killed. down Ford Road, uh, until somebody's killed. Just, it's not, including the young person or the person driving the car at over a hundred miles an hour. Madam Chair, have one more?
Councilman Muscat, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, uh, last meeting we talked about Warren Valley Golf Course, have you had to reed with the managing company yet?
It, it is scheduled for this Thursday, because that, it will still happen as long as, uh, everything is fine with the director's father.
Thank you. Councilman Muscat?
I wanted to, uh, restate the Facebook page as Dearborn Heights Veterans on Facebook.
Thank you. Any other comments from the table at this time? We will open it up to announcements for the community.
There are still tables available for the garage sale. If anybody is interested, they're twenty-five dollars a spot. And, um, you actually have quite a few in different locations that you can rent. Um, I would like to remind everybody about the Dearborn Heights Senior Council Picnic that's coming up on Thursday, August eighth. Uh, it's from ten AM to two PM, and this is my first event at the Warren Valley Golf Course, so I'm very happy and excited about that. I've met with Eric, and we've talked about doing some other events there as well, and the seniors are really excited about that, too. Uh, we also took delivery of our brand new twenty-eight passenger smart bus, um, the one that I received from Granton Road, and it's pretty impressive, so I'm really excited about that. I got to see it, we, yes. All of them, we are parking it at DPW, and it is going to help us, um, number one, save money, because we don't have to take two buses out on every trip now. We can just take the one twenty-eight passenger, and then if we have more, take additional. So it's also gonna help with the sign up of the trips and things like that. So it's gonna be really exciting. All of the seniors are happy about it, I'm happy about it, ecstatic about it. And we will also be doing a ribbon cutting for, uh, the bus that day on Thursday, August eighth as well. So it's a pretty exciting day for Dearborn Heights. Thank you.
Good job, Ken.
Thank you.
Any other public announcements? At this time, I will open it up to the residents for public comment. Please step to the microphone, give us your name, and you have a three-minute limit, please.
Good evening, my name is Khalid Musa, I'm a resident of Wilson, and a corridor between Beach Daily and Gully. My neighbors and I have signed a petition, all of us. We are requesting that the council do something about getting us some stop signs because of the speeding that you have just mentioned earlier. And really, it's really been, it's very, very hard for us, because we have kids playing outside. In the summer, uh, my daughter's going to high school this year, and she's gonna be walking for the first part, because it's right across the street from Beach Daily, where I live, on Wilson and Whitefield. And my kids play outside, I have a new neighbor, the demographics are changing, new people are coming in with kids. And we really need some stop signs on the south side, coming off of Beach Daily, because I live there and I see everywhere. I'm a corner house on Beach Daily, uh, sorry, on Wilson and Whitefield. And we really need some stop signs, two of them, one on my side and one on the newest side. Because that would really, really stop these kids from flying up and down.
Councilman Chair?
Thank you. Councilman Muscat?
Uh, the deputy chief, is he still here?
Yes, sir.
Can, can we send that over to traffic and, and have them, uh, look at that closely and?
Absolutely, noted and will do.
Okay, you have any petitions with you, if you wanna? Uh, if you give them to me, I'll give them over to the deputy chief right now. Just keep one, that doesn't. Just hang on, Joe, but the key was, the, yeah, the police, it's the police that really need that. And hopefully you can get multiple sites, but I'm not just wondering.
If I may say something. Uh, pocket is the key, meaning the more tickets we give these kids, the more their parents are gonna feel it, the one, the more they're gonna stop. But this is tickets, the bigger the ticket, the more they will stop.
Councilman Bell?
Mr. Musa, just quickly on this, so the traffic division's gonna do a study on this, and then they'll bring a motion forward for us to approve. Actually, I personally, just because I haven't done an informal search, I see that all the time, based, you know, I'm driving through there all the time for that particular area. You're absolutely right, they do take advantage of the fact that you got, uh, three blocks or three and a half blocks of nothing there, and then people do gun it, or some, you know, uh, younger generation do gun it. So I am definitely in favor upon, uh, either a stop sign or two, but just want to let you know, it does start with the police department first. And, but I am totally in favor of that, they bring that.
I think all of us are in favor of that, all, all of us gonna be in favor of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, name?
Hi, Amanda Breen, on this four-two-one-six, Croissant Street. Um, I wanted to address the Detroit Street rats. Now, I was walking up and down the street, I walk a lot in my neighborhood, I saw the rats, I called about the rats. So you can't say that nobody called, I did. And the young girl, they ask the rats, she has children, and they are coming out from the seams in her house. She has a rental house, that is ridiculous. And then when I'm walking, I hear other residents on Detroit Street saying the same thing. I don't live on Detroit, I live on Croissant, I do not want them on Croissants, but I've seen them. I saw them at one o'clock, I was coming back from the drive-in, and I saw a cat with a rat in its mouth running across the street, a block from my house, this cannot happen. I had an exterminator over today, not gonna happen in my house, but you can't say nobody's called, I did. I saw them, it was during the day. So, I just wanted to address that, there's something we have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's been going on since flooding, so, okay.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, um, Tivenon, I live on Raymond. Um, I just wanna take a big second to, first of all, thank and tell title, entire council for all the work they've done for, um, the S Club this year, on the fields, getting them playable. It was a lot, toward the end of the year, it was a lot easier on the kids, it was a lot safer. Um, there was a big improvement with just a little bit done. The bleachers that were put in, much appreciated. I walked around, we had a field day on Saturday, and I walked around with a little stick, trying to pick up the little gum wrappers that all the kids threw around. And just hearing the people comment about the fields and how much better they looked, um, it showed a great difference in our city. Um, but I also wanna take this time to, um, like I said, we had a field day on this last Saturday, and thank all those that were present, or, um, called or had something to do with the field day. Um, it was great to have you, have you there, we had a, um, award that were given out. And having our city back us up really was, um, important to us. But I did wanna give a special thanks to, um, some people that donated to our field day, because this year was really hard. Um, we tried some new things, we're trying to bring it back, trying to get these kids off the streets. And without them, it might not have been possible, made it very successful, kids had fun, we all had fun, great day. So I just wanted to thank Ray Muscat, John Milbazi, David Abdallah, Bill Bazey, Tom Wenzel. Anyone else say, I forgot, but, um, the special donations for that day, we greatly appreciate.
Thank you.
Ed Jackson over in Kingsbury Street, we start off by thanking council members for acknowledging, I guess, my hell raisers. Again, I'm gonna do like I did last, I'm gonna try to do a prepared statement, so that I can keep my thoughts in order. Uh, I'd like to express my gratitude with progress that happened to our memorials. Lights have been repaired, junk cut down, upgrades are happening, statue will be replaced soon. Like, uh, you mentioned earlier, I've also spoken to those folks who are talking about me next two weeks, I think you guys going New Orleans is gonna catch us on the way back. I will be aware of that, and I'll let everybody know about that, too. It's been long overdue, through a meeting of the, I understand you talked to Mary, and now you're having a meeting with Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Webb is involved in part of what you've seen up front. She contacted Ms. Deeter Hope, who's the master garden coordinator from Wayne State. I met with her, and she explained some of the ideas for plants and such. Even explaining some of the plants may not be able to be planned right away, possibly not till spring due to weather. The fact the condition of memorials have been brought up at numerous meetings by myself, Tom Wenzel, seems to have brought light to the problem. A week after Councilman Wenzel and I spoke at the meeting, and I'd mentioned over two hundred and two thousand people a year, roughly, seated in front of the city council, things started to happen. It just bothers me that it feels like I have to embarrass my city leaders into acting. Now, please replace the flags and show some respect.
Thank you. Any other further public comment, your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Mike Doherty, Raymond Street, I'm with the Gads Club. I also wanted to let everybody know we're starting a fall ball season this year. We're having flag football and, uh, cheerleader registrations that can take place at the Richard A. Young Center. So thank you very much, everybody in the council, and Mr. Mayor, for everything you've done and your continued support.
When is that gonna start the registration, Steve?
Right now.
Right now, starts now? One, one thing everybody should be aware of, because very well deserved, but you were the recipient on Saturday of a, award, and
Oh, yes, sir.
And, and I, it was much deserved, but all the work that both of you do for D seven is great. You do it for the kids, and, uh, thank you on behalf of all the kids.
Thank you. Any further comment from the audience? Your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Diane Mussero, I live on Wilson, and just a side comment, I'm sure the chief knows already. If you do a traffic pattern study, it's gonna be different now than it is in September, because the kids are out of school. We have Presswood High School, we have the Wise Island Academy, we have the preschool, and we have Divine Child. All that traffic comes up and down our street, so it's not gonna be a true picture. So that's just my comment.
Good point, good point.
Thank you.
Here in the I Q Corporation Council of Lincoln Street. Uh, I just wanna comment, um, briefly on the issue of conflict of interest. I do not have a conflict of interest, and I understand the applicable rules that apply to me. The arguments that were put forward by the city council's attorney, respectfully, regarding me having conflict of interest were rejected. Moreover, my opinion, as stated and reiterated by Judge Hughes, was also upheld, uh, in that particular litigation. So, uh, it, it is unfortunate, but one of these days, I'd like to have an opportunity to explain conflicts of interest to you in this context, because it's a little different. Uh, I represent the city as an entity, as distinct from its officers and employees. And, uh, I've always tried to do my best, and I've been doing this for well over twenty years. And I've represented the city in three different administrations. I would also, um, note, uh, that I have concerns about making sure we need to be careful about making statements about city contractors, residents, based on things that we've heard from other people. These things should be investigated, the issue should be raised, but we need to be careful about making accusations, because these things can end up having consequences, and many of those consequences can be legal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Name, three minutes, if you know.
I gave some of you a few pages from Plant Moran Audit, from two thousand five, two thousand six, up to two thousand eighteen. Our mayor wants to bring Plant Moran to do the forensic audit. And apparently, they have been telling the administration for the last fourteen years what to do when that was done.
That is wrong.
Including, including several years, I would note, seven years, they were talking about the retiree insurance fund. They asked the administration, year after year after year, and the papers are in your hands, to put, to start to put money in it, so it is easier for the future administration, and it has less burden on the taxpayers in the future. Not even one penny was put in it, Dearborn next to us put sixty-two million dollars in it, the same period of time, we put zero in it. And Plant Moran done their job, the administration didn't do their job, because they didn't implement what's in the report. And I'm asking you especially, Bob, Dave, and the president and vice president, please read those pages and see what those reports said, and you will see that. The neglect of the duty of that office over the years is, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing to me as a resident when I went back and read all these things. The other thing I want to man, to say, and I take responsibility, and it's not toward you, Jack, because it happened before your time. Customer walked to my office today, he owns a property on Van Boll and Telegraph, was rented. Some of the residents put firecrackers inside one of the rooms and burned down. The police department came, I don't know what year it happened, but listen, please, what I'm going to say, and I take responsibility, and the man is willing to come and testify in front of you. They, the police came and put out the fire with fire extinguisher, the, uh, fire department apparently wasn't called or didn't come, because the fire was a spawn. The next day, he had this fire in second room in the building. The previous director of the building and safety came in, and our mayor came to that building, and I'm sure he knows probably who I'm talking about, because I have his name and his phone number and his address. He demanded five thousand dollars to write the report for him, so he can collect the maximum money from the insurance. The next day, he sent the gentleman by the name number, and I'm not going to say his last name. And he told him, why don't you pay five thousand dollars and everything will be okay, you collect your insurance. He filed the police report with our police department, nothing happened. And Mr. Bazey and Mr. Ray, they brought the issue of the Gully House, and I foiaed the papers based on the request of the previous director. They gave me everything except the initial report about how much damage need to be corrected in the house. And at the end of the foia, they, they denied me that report, and they said, because of external investigation. I'm asking the mayor, what is happening to that investigation? Why we don't know about it, what happened to that investigation? And why the reason we don't have a director for the building and safety in our city for the last seven months?
Thank you.
And I am willing to bring that person, and he's willing to come here, but I did advise him to go again to the FBI, because that's the right route to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, um, public comments? Motion to adjourn by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Bazey, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any other comments?